Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We begin with prayer. If you would like to join me in bowing your heads. Gracious Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have here to serve our citizens, and we thank you for the blessings that you give us with all our city employees. We ask that you keep them safe and in your will. Be with our deliberations tonight. We ask this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
And I'd like to remind the audience tonight that if you have your cellphone or electronic device, please take a moment, as council members do also, to silence our cellphones and other electronic devices during the meeting. And any announcements?
No, Mayor, I have none this evening. That takes us to personal appearances.
Okay, and before we start personal appearances, as we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and your input. If you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address for us. To be helpful, let us know if you'll be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk. So be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from our citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you have to say. And finally, since you are speaking as a representative of our citizens, we ask you to be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so that we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. With that, Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Eric Carvin.
My name's Eric Carvin, and my address is 1003 Mackinac, and I'm speaking solely. How many -- whoa, starting wrong in the middle. First, I want to thank council members and the city manager for responding to my personal appearance at the last council meeting. To be clear, my fireworks concern is with the use of audible fireworks at times that are prohibited by the city ordinance. My concern is not with the prohibitions of the ordinance not being too limited in scope. My concern is not with fireworks being used at times allowed by the ordinance. In other words, I am not speaking -- or I am not seeking to have the ordinance amended so as to put it in conflict with state law. I simply want to have the current ordinance enforced. At the previous meeting, I mentioned fireworks being used in my neighborhood on July 8th. There have continued to be fireworks in my neighborhood since then. On Friday, July 21st, I was asleep in bed when, at 11:15 PM, I was awakened by booms of fireworks being set off a couple of blocks from me. This noise continued off and on for about a half an hour. Last night, there were fireworks going off again near my home, this time between 9:45 PM and 10:30 PM. I wonder how seriously the police take the fireworks ordinance. How many fireworks calls have they followed up in the last month? How many violators have they warned? How many citations have they issued? How many violators have been fined and for what amounts? A Saginaw police officer says in a YouTube video, quote, "Be safe and courteous to your neighbors, but mostly have fun and enjoy the holiday," close quote. He also mentions problems that affect the enforcement of the fireworks ordinance. Quote, "In-progress calls have priority over fireworks calls," end quote. "The police must be there to witness a violation of the fireworks ordinance." Are the police the only city officials authorized to enforce the fireworks ordinance? What about scenic or the code enforcement officers? How about creating a new special squad charged with nothing but enforcing the fireworks ordinance? I've received a letter from the city manager in which he says, quote, "We're committed to making the city of Saginaw an enjoyable community for all," close quote. An enjoyable community for all. Wouldn't that be wonderful if it were possible in the real world? The reality is that there are people who enjoy using fireworks at times prohibited by the city ordinance, while there are people who do not enjoy such use of fireworks. In trying to make the city of Saginaw an enjoyable community, the city government should not be concerned with making the city enjoyable for those who violate the fireworks ordinance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jackie Anklum.
My name's Jackie Anklum. Address is 804 South Hamilton Street. I'm the president of United Steelworkers here at St. Mary's Hospital, Local 9899. We have been unionized there since the year 2005. I would like to help you understand the type of union workers that take care of you when you are a patient or visitor at St. Mary's. We are the front desk who greet you when you come in. We are the registrations that register you. We are the phlebotomist to draw your blood. We are the pre-op to repair you for your surgery. We are the sterile processing that makes sure that the surgical tools are sterile for your procedure and everything is done safe. We are the nursing assistants to take care of your vitals, help bade you, and any other of your needs that may be assisted with. We are the unit secretaries to help the doctors put the orders in for you and to answer any of the phone calls that your family or loved ones might have. We are the pharmacy techs to prepare meds for you and to fill the floors with the med carts for your needs. We are materials management. We supply all the floors with the supplies that the nursing staff will need to take care of you. We are the film librarians to help radiology access your x-rays. We are the MRI techs assistants, the anesthesiologist aides, the endo assistants. We are the EDTs in the ER that take your blood, EKGs, and vitals, and help keep you calm when you come in with a time of need. We are the EKG techs that do your EKGs on your heart so that the doctor can access it to make sure if you need to go to some type of procedure right away. We are the patient transporters to take you to all of your tests, and most important, when you wail out to the discharge to go home, we make sure you get to your car safely. We are the nutritional services who prepare your meals and deliver them, that keep the cafeteria stocked and clean to help feed the visitors when they come in. We are the housekeepers that keep your room clean and sanitized and make sure that the rest of the hospital is kept clean and sanitized also. We are in every inch of that hospital. I may not have hit every employee there that works there as a union member, but I just wanted to let you know some of the highlights of some of them. When you're a union worker, you're guaranteed to have a safer working condition and better wages. Everyone says steelworkers and healthcare. Well, we've been in healthcare since 1945. USW is actually responsible for making sure that kidney dialysis machines were getting into the hospitals. Most people don't even know that. We were the first -- we were first formed a union in California where we have over 5,000 RNs. We have the only healthcare council that helps assist all USW healthcare units with the safety and legal issues that may arise. We are now in the process of forming a district sub-council to help you stay more on top of issues. Thank you.
Final speaker tonight is Debbie Malconian.
Debbie Malconian, 2116 Adams Boulevard, Saginaw, Michigan, president of the Adams Boulevard Neighborhood Association. This three-minute talk is way overdue. I should have come before the city council, city manager, and everyone watching to thank everyone for an outstanding job that you guys are doing. I want to give kudos especially to the inspections department and to Phil Carwatt's engineering and traffic department. Within the past three months, I've had several residents call with some concerns regarding a sewer that was sinking in front of their house, regarding a tree that fell over just like that in the middle of the boulevard, regarding a 30-minute speed sign that was placed between State Street and Jameson due to the heavy traffic coming from the bar that's on the corner in the evening. I received phone calls after these problems, conditions, concerns were completed with generous thank yous from the resident as well as from other people that noticed these things have been done. I just want to thank all the departments, council for any time I wanted to meet and chat with you, talk about anything that was on my mind, as well as the police and fire departments. Recently, the neighbors behind me were evicted, and there was a horrendous mess left, and this was right after the Fourth of July. And John Stempel's department came, got in touch with the landlord, and made sure that was cleaned up. There must have been literally hundreds of pounds of dog feces in the backyard, which made me cancel my home for the garden walk that was scheduled that weekend. But yet Terry Collier was persistent in contacting the landlord and getting that cleaned up. I just don't think enough thanks are given to these departments, to our fire and police department, and you as the council and city manager. And I wanted to make sure I went on record and said that this evening. Thank you.
With that, Mayor, our next business is remarks of council.
I remind council members, we have a five-minute limit, and tonight we begin with Councilman John Mill.
I wanted to begin my remarks this evening, some activities I've been doing in the last couple of weeks. I visited the wastewater treatment plant. I wanted to thank the director there, Brian Baldwin, and one of his operating foremen, John. It was a very informative visit, both to the main plant and one of the retention basins. And I happened to be at the retention basin when they were beginning the work of installing a backup generator, which we just approved up here at council about a month and a half ago. So it's nice to see work progressing that comes through here, see the end results. We also had Light Up the City Walk last week. Thanks to everyone who attended that, and that includes our chief of police and representatives of our fire department, the state police officers in this area, and many of the neighborhood organizations. They hit all the light-up walks, not just the ones for their home association that they're sponsoring. So Ms. Malconian, thank you for complimenting the city staff here. It's something -- I get asked by people, I'm one of the newest council members, and they say, "Why did you want to run?" And it was partly because of the city staff and the city manager. Things run well here. Situations you just described are the norm now. Problems, when they arise, they're taken care of, they don't fester, they don't become a long-term problem. We have the approach of take care of it once and do it right once, and not have to keep going back to it. So I'm glad it's also noticed, besides council members and the staff amongst ourselves, that it's generally noticed. So I think that covers my remarks for the evening.
I will pass tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have much to say either, but just enjoying the summer and the walks on Light Up the City on Wednesdays have been great, attending those. Walking the neighborhoods and seeing what's going on is really enlightening, to be able to talk to some of the citizens and seeing some of their concerns and things going on in their neighborhood. Unfortunately, one of the walks, a dog attacked another dog right in front of the state police. After a while, they got him loose, but it was just this bad situation. Never seen anything like that in my life personally. But other than that, I want the citizens of the city of Saginaw to enjoy what we had to offer. Light Up the City Friday Night Live and all the other things that's going on. I understand that the mayor's going to be on the stage with the OJs coming up in August. I'm looking forward to that. I don't know if he's going to sing or dance, but whatever it is, it will be a sight to behold, so I'm looking forward to that. Other than that, I don't have any other comments. Thank you.
Good evening, citizens. First of all, I'd like to thank our community, the people who came up and spoke, Mr. Eric, Ms. Jackie, and Ms. Deborah. Great job. It's always good to have everybody come in and say their concerns. Mr. Eric, I don't know what we can do or say. I hope that we can find some resolution for you. It's just a tough thing, because people are, they're still going off in my neighborhood as well, so -- and I know that it's real irritating. Ms. Jackie, great job. Great job. Don't be nervous. You did great. Ms. Deborah, as always, thank you. This week was a busy week for the last two weeks. On last Sunday, Saginaw Valley Community Church Pastor Dick Sayes, they celebrated 25 years of service. I stepped in and represented the city for the mayor in his absence. On Thursday, Janet Nash, the dedication of the park that's right over in front of the Carrer -- not Carrer Center.
Sassa.
Sassa. Sassa. It is going to be a beautiful park. If you have not been over there yet, please go. Afterwards, we went to the temple. They showed a slight presentation. Because it was so hot outside, thank Jesus for taking us indoors. And the air conditioner was working, so we actually stayed cool. On Saturday, I had a ball on Saturday. I went over to the Police's Union Hall, and they had a real cook-off. And I didn't know anything about it till the day before. They had eight to nine contestants, some were police officers, and it was just a ball. I had a good time. And so I asked them to next year. They wanted to be bigger and better. I said, "If they give me the information, I will make sure that I do a shout-out at the meeting so that people can come." We did have one female that came in second place, and I was so proud, because it was only two females. So me and we still got our role. We did have a male that won, but it was just good. They started at 10 o'clock in the morning. They judged at 5 o'clock. I mean, everything was like clockwork, but it was just a real good activity. And I think that if citizens would have known, I think more would have came out to it. On August the 3rd, switching gears, Saginaw CAC, Community Action Center, is hosting their action day from 3 to 6 PM. The community is invited. We are having free food, entertainment, prizes, and giveaways, and much, much more. So on August the 3rd, please have family members or children, go get a busload. That's what I'm telling people about Light Up the City. Get a busload of children. And come over and eat some hot dogs and juice and punch with us. The address is 2824 Perkins Street. Everyone is invited. It is a community picnic. It is just not one side of the bridge. It is for the whole city to come over and have fun with us on that day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I do want to say good evening, everyone. First, to our speakers, Mr. Carvin, I know we sympathize with you. Part of the problem, obviously, is one of logistics trying to actually witness these events. I would certainly say to any citizen out there who has the opportunity, you can help. If you can take photos, videos of the violators, it would certainly help us. Part of the problem is simply getting the ability to respond timely to these events. I don't know more we can say, other than the legislature allowing us to do what we've done. There's not a lot more we can do, except enforcement, and hopefully with the help of the citizens. Ms. Anklum, thank you for your input. We appreciate it as well. Debbie, Ms. Malconian, it's always nice to hear acknowledgements for the efforts of the city to provide prompt, effective service to citizens, so thank you for that as well. We did have a mention of Friday Night Live. It is ongoing. There's several more coming up. Please attend if you haven't. It's a great event. I didn't make it this past Friday. Two Fridays ago, I made it to the Blues Brothers, which was a fabulous event. It was a really, really great performance. So if you haven't had a chance to get down there, please do. The dedication of Janet Nash Park as well was quite a wonderful event. We now have a new park face right on the riverfront. It's a great place to stop and take a look at the river, the downtown area. It's a great view. And I think that's about all I have for today, Mr. Mayor.
I have no comment.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all, everyone for being here today. Mr. Carvin, I hope I'm saying your name correctly. It's definitely a work in progress. In my opinion, it's a substantial improvement from past years. However, that doesn't necessarily mean we should stop here. You did make some good points. Hopefully, we can get together, or the relevant parties can get together and come up with some additional creative solutions to address the issue, because clearly it hasn't gone away, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we can give up. I believe Mr. Clark gave a good suggestion as far as helping with enforcement with pictures and possible videos. Of course, you have to be safe in doing that, but you can help in enforcement in that fashion. Ms. Anklum, I hope I'm saying your name correctly. Thanks for appearing tonight. It's clearly that your union is very important to the operation of the city, and thank you for your service. Ms. Malconian, we appreciate your thanks. It's good to hear the city doing what it's asked to do. Thank you for coming tonight. There's just a couple of points I wanted to make this evening. I see that Stars is now offering a 24/7 dial-up service, which is sound like equivalent to Uber and Lyft. And I brought, of course, I brought an article where it talks about Uber and Lyft and how it competes with public transit. It could be a public safety issue as well as a market competition. The reason why Uber and Lyft make the money that they do is because they're not as regulated as public transportation, and that's why they're able to undercut costs. And sometimes I see that municipalities are a little behind in catching up with their operations. So I believe we, as a city, should look into, I believe the state legislation has, at least in the process of adopting some legislation as far as Uber and Lyft operating in the state. So I just think in order to protect Stars and as they continue to update their service and providing service that our residents want, we should do what we can to protect them and make sure that they're competing evenly with everyone else. I saw recently Indigo Venue. It's right across the street from Sassa. Not across the street, but across the river on Water Street. And it appears that the riverfront is taking shape. Indigo was recently awarded one of the eight best jazz clubs in the state. So congratulations, Mr. and Mrs. Allen, on that achievement. I guess my last point was that, I guess in the month of July, there were two recent shootings at party stores. One was in the city and one was in Buena Vista. And I know I mentioned maybe late last year as far as possible ordinances addressing party stores, and as Ms. Malconian brought up a few times, there's some aesthetic issues as far as paper and the windows. But party stores are staple to the community. I mean, for many of us, this is the only place where we can get fruits, vegetables, maybe fresh foods, but I don't know if they understand that, or -- and I don't want to group them all. The vast majority of our exceptional business establishment, but there's a few that could step up their game a little bit. And it just that as far as the appearance of equitable treatment and as far as other business establishments who have been either fined or closed down, such as rental properties, pawn shops, scrap yards, after-party establishments, now, I guess, restaurants or bars, they're being closed due to crime that is happening on their property. I think the city should consider looking at ordinances or applying current ordinances similar to these parties, just to give a sense of equal treatment for all business establishments. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, again, I'd like to just echo the comments from our council members for our presenters today. Thank you for coming and sharing with us. We certainly appreciate that. Councilman Balls and Councilwoman Brenda Moore, yes, I am going to go onstage. I am going to sing, and as soon as they pass the hat and raise enough money, I'll stop. So I think we could eliminate a lot of debt by me singing, because I think they would really contribute to me to shut up up there and not sing. So, but I look forward to all the events. A lot of events going on all week long in the city of Saginaw, and I hope our citizens take advantage of those. And many from outside come in and take advantage of those also. So it's a great, it's a great time, especially in the summertime when these different activities are going on. Congratulations to our friends of Hoyt Park for landing that big tournament coming in down there. That's a showcase, and we're really excited about that down there. They are looking for volunteers to help during that tournament and so forth, so maybe, Michael Balls, you could do some umpiring or something down there. I think you'd be good at that, you know? I think you'd be good at that. With that, though, no other comments. Let's move on to -- oh, just that. Okay. Madam?
Thank you. Your next order of business is the reports from manager.
Thank you. We have some presentations tonight, so just a few items before that. I remind everyone of the citywide neighborhood meeting is this Thursday at 5:30. The meeting this month is hosted by the Heritage Square Association, and it's at First Presbyterian Church at 121 South Harrison Street. Also, for the rest of council who is not on the committee, our mission vision statement group is going to be meeting again next week. The word map that was suggested by our focus group is completed, so that should have been forwarded to the group, and we'll bring that, make it part of our overall vision. Also, I'd mention that we have a Brownfield presentation tonight. There's going to be some Brownfield training sessions at the county, but I think the county is opening up to county commissioners, so that could be an opportunity for some council members to attend that as well. If you're interested in that, you can check with my office, and we'll get you the information on date and time and location. I believe it's at the county building, so we can get you the time and locations. You can get it on your calendars if that's something you're interested in. And I'd just say a word about the fireworks, and a couple council members mentioned, but I'll mention it too, that as the calls come in, we know they do get prioritized, and priority one calls are going to be the first to respond. You all know, I'm not going to say the numbers that we have on staff for each shift, but with the numbers that we have, it's difficult to get to all of the high-priority calls. Secondly, and Chief can mention, and the scenic has tried to do enforcement for fireworks before too, but it's difficult, it is difficult for them to locate where they're coming from. And typically, I believe Chief and John could confirm, that the 911 calls typically say, "There's fireworks going off in my neighborhood." So the officer or the scenic person is left to try to find them themselves. For non-priority-one call, the response time, it can be a while before they get there. They may be done shooting off fireworks. So as Mayor Protem mentioned, it's an opportunity, if that's something that citizens want to do, photographs or video can help both the scenic and the police department in that type of enforcement. I think we have received that type of video evidence before for barking dogs and different cases like that, so that's always helpful. So with that, I'm going to ask our first presenter, Sheriff Fetterspiel. He contacted the city about presenting, about the potential new jail, so I thought it'd be best to give him some time under management. I thought it'd be best to give him some time under management update in case council members have questions with that. And so, I'll ask the sheriff to come up to the podium and, and offer his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Mr. Manager, Staff, and Citizens of the City of Saginaw. It has been quite some time since I have been here in the city council chamber. So, it is a pleasure to be back with all of you. Uh, I did want to speak with you and I will try to keep my presentation brief. As most of you have heard, the Saginaw County Board of Commissioners has been exploring the possibility of getting a new jail or renovating a building. And just last month, it was settled upon building new right across the street from the current jail. And I'll have some photos up here, but I just wanted to lay out the timeline. It's been nearly two and a half years that we've been discussing this project. Um, there is a need for a new jail. The one that we currently have is nearly 50 years old. It was not built to house 513 inmates. It was originally built to house 218. It has been added on to several times. The sheriff's headquarters was once located on the first floor of the jail building. In a 96, it was decided to use some of that space for more jail space and build a new headquarters building. So, we've been existing in there, but we have issues that are very serious in nature. Safety for the staff, safety for the inmates, liability. There are a lot of things that we could go on, but I don't want to bore you with the details, just so that you know that there was some rationale behind the decision to explore a new facility. The decision was made, as I said, in June of this year to build a new Saginaw County Adult Detention Center, otherwise known as a jail. It will not house juveniles. It will house 511 individuals as opposed to 513. So, nearly the same size, but a much better layout. If you look on the screen, what I've done is shown two diagrams. One is an overhead photo of the Saginaw County Jail. And if you're looking at the photograph or the image on the left, uh, it says Saginaw County Jail. It's in pink. You would be looking to the top would be to the west. So, Harrison Street is where the new jail is going to be located. That was another thing I wanted to talk to you about. The plans for this jail, in order to make sure we have the right-sized jail, which is nearly 86,000 square feet, it will be four stories tall, uh, we had to make it a square as opposed to a rectangle. So, we could not utilize the parking lot, the metered lot, which would be to the east of the current jail. Would have pushed up against the Baptist church and, uh, it just wasn't going to fit. So, we needed to make a square and we also want to keep it close to our campus because some of you may know and others may not, all prisoners in the Saginaw County Jail that must appear in court are transported to the courthouse underground through a tunnel that starts in the headquarters building, runs underground to the jail, and runs underground from the jail on the other side to the courthouse in the basement and a special elevator is used to transport inmates. That's done for safety and security of the community and the officers. Obviously, any chance that we can to limit the movement of individuals who are incarcerated, some of whom may be sentenced to long periods of time. We want to make sure that we provide a safe environment for our community by transporting individuals underground. That is another reason why the architects and the commissioners decided to choose a location that is very close to the current building so that we could tap into the existing tunnel. We'll only have to use a little bit of real estate to, uh, construct a new portion of the tunnel that will tie into the very end of the existing one. And that would also allow us then to continue our operations without interruption and without having to go above. So, those are the two diagrams of what, uh, the size of the jail would, would be. It's going to be taller, about the same size in diameter. Uh, but again, this is something that, uh, I will be approaching the planning commission tomorrow night, uh, to listen to different individuals who will be presenting about road closures. And it is something that myself and maybe our manager, Mr. Bellman, and others, will be approaching the planning commission here in the city of Saginaw, as well as the city council, to ask for consideration of closure of one block of Harrison Street between Cass and Adams. If you're looking at that picture, we would tear down the old jail and that would become a new parking lot. But it would change the flow of traffic there, obviously. And it's something I want all of you to be considered of and give you a, an advance look at the decisions that are being made at the county level and how we will need assistance from all of you here at city council in order to realize this construction project. The next few, um, slides show a rendering of what the different levels of the jail will look like. I'm not going to bore you with these because number one, I don't think you can see them any better than I can, although some of you may can on those little tablets. See, I don't have that. You got it? Oh, you got it right there? That's great. My how times have changed. Uh, it hasn't been that long since I've been here, but has it? Nice. So, if you're looking at it, there's, it, the sheriff's headquarters is in the first floor of the new building with the jail, booking, uh, two vehicle entry points for officers. Uh, we're also going to make those Sally ports, uh, large enough to hold a bus if necessary. Uh, we are responsible for over 500 inmates and should there ever be a fire or something, we do have evacuation plans. Of course, we have a great city fire department. Uh, I see the chief in the back. And, and again, I'd like to talk to the chief as well as we move forward and the city chief of the police department, Mr. Ruth Chiefs, uh, to discuss the Harrison Street corridor. Obviously, that's something that is going to affect their services. So, we'll be reaching out to them as well. Uh, but these are just images of what the new jail or detention center will look like. I want to go back to the decisions made, the decisions made to have a new facility. I'm sure someone is wondering, "What does something like this cost?" I asked the question. It's $35.8 million. Now, my commission originally wanted to ask for a millage to pay for it. And I said, "No." And that's why it took nearly two and a half years to get this project off the ground. How we're going to pay for it is by making it a direct observation jail as opposed to a linear bar jail. With that being said, we can manage and oversee the same number of individuals, but with fewer staff and do it safely. So, I am prepared to reduce my staff from 63 to 43 in the jail, utilize that savings to pay for this project, the annual bond, if you will, because we are going to bond it out. Now, the individuals affected by this change and my staff, I've already been meeting with the individuals. Uh, there are at least 10 that want to come out and work the road patrol. And we will be sending them to the academy. So, I would ask, uh, your chief to, uh, keep a few subjects in mind. He's had pretty good luck so far from some of the employees that come out of the jail who are excellent police officers here in the city of Saginaw. I'm proud of that relationship and the fact that we've worked so well together to find employment for quality men and women who are right here from Saginaw. Uh, so those who are eligible for the academy will be going over the next three years because this is a three-year process. And we will be getting them out onto our road patrol and other agencies as the openings occur. We will also have retirements. And we also have some staff members that will be finding jobs within Saginaw County, maybe in the not, not in the same classification. But my goal is to find a job for every one of those 20 so that we do not have to lay anyone off. With that being said, we now know that it's a bonded issue, 38.5 million, or 35.8, I'm sorry, million dollars, and that we are going to be paying for it through reduction in staff. We do have to do, we have some things that we must consider, uh, outside of the road closure. Spicer Group has been contracted by the county to do an initial assessment, uh, survey of that property within that one block area. Again, I have an email from Spicer Group. I did not include it in this because it is not an official, uh, document yet, but they're already looking at the infrastructure underneath the road to see what that would take and how it would affect other services, water, sewer, electric and things like that. So, there are some things from the county level that we will be working on, but it has been approved and it is moving forward. And if all goes well, we may even be able to see construction begin, uh, March or April of next year with an 18 to 24-month completion date. Again, more diagrams of the facility. This is a rendering of the front of the facility. Um... This new jail headquarters building, I think it's been a long time coming and it's more than necessary. For those of you who have ever had complaints or fielded calls about individuals who may be incarcerated in the Saginaw County Jail, I recently had a question from, uh, Councilman Humphries about our programming, which we, uh, take great pride in having Forgotten Man Ministries and other programs in existence. And the question was, "Do we have, um, NA and AA programs within the jail?" And the answer, Mr. Humphries, I did check on that councilman, and the answer is, "No, we do not." But we have a different program that is not either one of those, but pertains to it. Uh, and I can, I don't have it with me, but the name of the program is, uh, Making a Change. And so, we have a program that deals with those types of issues. It's not your traditional NA or AA, but, uh, I can provide you more information on that, uh, in the week to come. But we do anticipate having, uh, as much programming as we've had in the past and maybe even add in some additional. Uh, for those of you in the law profession, we are looking at rooms for, uh, attorneys, for attorney-client visits, also for visitation for family members, um, that you don't have to wait outside. We'll have an actual lobby for people to come into. So, there are positive things for the community. Uh, again, I wanted to make sure that we didn't put another tax on our taxpayers in order to have this happen without first exploring every single option that we had. And the decision that we arrived at was not an easy decision, but I believe it was the right decision, especially since in the next three years, we, we should be able to accommodate those individuals who will be finding work within the organization, just doing a different job classification. And hopefully, it puts them in a different union because I've got five unions there. And, um, proud to say that we're all making things work in a very forward fashion at Saginaw County Government, uh, that they will also have better, uh, benefits packages if they're able to move on. So, they may end up making it a little bit better than they originally thought, um, had they stayed in the field of corrections. So, the other last point I'd like to make is that the commissioners are going to be deciding which authority is going to be overseeing the construction of this facility and its progress. And, uh, Mr. Bellman, County Controller, is going to be making a presentation to my commissioners in August to request that this project be placed in front of the building authority of Saginaw County. It's a five-member panel. Uh, one member is a vacancy at this point. There are four members, uh, one to include the controller, uh, Mr. Novak, our county treasurer. And, uh, quite frankly, I don't recall the other two because I don't have my notes, but it is a five-person panel that will oversee this. I will have a lot of input, obviously, because I'm the sheriff. My point of contention to the building authority and to my commissioners was this project should and must allow local labor to bid these jobs. And there's going to be a lot of work, from concrete work, carpentry work, electrical, engineer. And we have excellent skilled trades. Steel, obviously, is another one. I'm glad to see the steel workers here. But we have a lot of skilled trades workers right here in Saginaw that I would like to see be working on this project. And I've made that point clear to my commissioners. I would ask, uh, all of you to make that consideration as well. If you have any input or any thoughts about that, to contact our local county commissioners. But it is a process that is just now getting underway and should be in full swing by August to September as we take a look at these preparations. Um, and other than that, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to go on too much longer. I just wanted to make sure to let you know where we are, that it will not cost the city of Saginaw residents or the county of Saginaw residents any additional monies and that we are working at having a safe and secure and lower liability facility. Thank you.
Councilmember, if you have any questions, go ahead, Councilman Mel.
Good evening, Sheriff Fetterstiel.
Good evening.
On the location, the footprint of the building, where it would require total closure, including underground utilities probably...
Yes, sir.
Was it considered to move the project farther westward and perhaps need to acquire, I believe it's a law office in that corner of the block that is not currently county property?
Yeah, that had been discussed, but obviously, it is not property that is owned by the county. So, uh, I guess that would be a question for my commissioners or to my controller about that. But I do remember it was discussed. We needed a footprint. Again, it needed to be a particular size as a square as opposed to a rectangle. And there's a lot of reasons for it. I'm not going to, uh, stand here and talk about all of them. But the main purpose of having it be a square is so that you can have a centrally located housing control in each floor. And you don't want to lose your, your, uh, sightlines the further it goes. And so, the, the longer it gets as a rectangle, you would need two control centers in each of the floors, thereby increasing staff, expense for technology, et cetera. So, we were limited. Um, again, the, the portion of this building that we needed to be closest to the existing structure because of the construction of the tunnel. And that, that's a major issue that would also interfere with that infrastructure. So, in the discussions, if we're going to interfere with those and have to cap things at one end or the other, some of which may be abandoned at this time, uh, then we wanted to bring the building as close to the sidewalk on the east side of the road as possible because of that tunnel.
And the orientation of the building is such the front is the south face.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Sheriff, uh, again, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I have other concerns regarding the closing of the road, particularly if there are significant underground utilities, including sewer, water lines. We may not be able to cap them as you're talking about. We, there would certainly be extensive cost in doing those kinds of renovations. I would not want the city to have to bear those costs. So, I guess what are the thoughts on those two issues? A, you know, we have to have the ability to continue service lines and sewers without having to reconstruct them elsewhere. And B, the cost to the city of any such arrangements?
Well, I can't answer for my commissioners, but it would be my belief that their cost to the city would not, uh, exist. This is a project the county is building. Um, we're looking for assistance for the use of that road, uh, not coming here to ask for any dollars. But I would like to just throw out a couple of sentences that I got from a preliminary report, uh, from Jeff Wood, Principal Senior Project Surveyor of Spicer. And this is, uh, from a document from this past winter, um, that there was a file and plans, utility plans for Harrison Street from Cass to Adams. I don't know when that, uh, report was conducted, but there was some information in a file appearing that a 10-inch combined sewer does not have any service connections on it. And therefore, the pipe can be abandoned by plugging the pipe at the manhole at Cass Street and manholes be removed as no need for construction of the new, or for construction of the new building. That would be a $10,000 cost. Again, I don't anticipate that the city of Saginaw would have to do that work. But there was also talk about an 8-inch water main that extends from Cass to Adams and does not have any service connections. And again, these are things from Spicer, from a file. So, it hasn't been updated recently, but I was encouraged by that report that was in the file because somewhere along the line, there was some fiber optics that had been brought into 911 on the Harrison Street side. And I believe that that is where those reports originated. So, again, we're, um, I can't speak for the county, but I can speak as the sheriff of Saginaw County and tell you that, uh, it is not my plan to have you pay for the project for the Saginaw County Jail. And so, I can... for the project for the Saginaw County Jail. And so, I can do some research and come back to you in August after I speak to my commissioners and bring the concerns back. But that's never been a discussion at our meetings when we've discussed the jail, and I don't believe that it's going to be.
Plans are submitted to the city, engineering reviews those plans, and they would be the final ones to say if a line could be capped or moved. Even if there aren't any, even if there aren't services coming from a line, it could be part of our loop system for water, it could have some other impact on sewers. So, in the past, when we do vacate streets that have to have these services moved, which could be moved even into the sidewalk or something like that, and maintain that level, that cost goes back to the project. So, if it's the county doing it, then the county, that would be part of their project costs. Given the cost of the overall project, if it's in the thirties a million, this would probably be a minimal, minimal cost compared to the overall project. So, if it benefits, I'm sure the county would look at if it benefits them enough to have the tunnel and it costs a couple hundred thousand dollars to move lines, then that's, it probably makes sense when they weigh that. Engineering would also do a traffic impact study, which they do with any closure. So, they would count the vehicles, determine the traffic use, and that information be available as well.
Sheriff, in looking at this, and just, obviously, the parking lot that is to the west and to the southwest of the proposed area, that's a very large parking lot. This facility would fit into that parking lot without closing any streets at all. Is that, I mean, what's your thoughts and why would we go this way instead?
Yeah, and that's a great question, because it was a question that I had as well. This decision was made not by me, although I was part of the decision-making group. It was a jail subcommittee made up of commission members, myself, and Judge Clark, the District Court. And the, I believe the bottom line for where it is, is because it would fit in that space, and the cost of building that underground tunnel per foot to move it an additional hundred feet or more would have really increased the cost of that facility. And so, I believe it was a decision that was made on finance more than it was on actually having it be there. Because, again, the tunnel is really crucial to our operations, but it is also an expensive part of what we're trying to accomplish because it is so far under the ground. Must be heated, it must be lit, et cetera, and it must be waterproof. So, I believe that was the driving factor in the rationale to move the jail there and utilize the Harrison Street portion of the roadway.
So, are you connecting then in the rendering we've seen there? Are we connecting into the existing one already, or are we, I mean, how far does the existing one go?
Well, when you're looking at it, I don't think this has a pointer on it, but
That's all right.
I, I would say that when you're looking at the diagram, where it says Saginaw County Jail. Always somebody to help me out. That's nice. It's green. It can't be blue, but it's green. That's all right. Did I kill it? There we go. Right in here, that's dying up. Right there to over to the courthouse is where the tunnel is. So, as you can see.
I guess I'm not seeing your light over there. Is that light shining on that?
Yeah, it is. It's a little green dot.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're on the left side. Okay, sure.
Yeah, right over here.
I was looking for the other side, the other map.
The other.
The map on the right, right there. Yeah.
So, as you can see, this is where the tunnel will come. It's going right over where the existing jail, or under the existing jail is. But the existing tunnel, they will cut into it right here. So, under the ground. So, it'll be under a parking lot. But if we were to move back here, as you can see.
Okay.
We would have quite a bit further to go.
Sure, sure.
And again, it's really about.
Trying to make it, we were pinching every penny on this project to make sure we could get it to a point where we did not have to go out for a millage. Because, again, I think we're millaged beyond our means sometimes as communities, not just here in the city, but across the county, and people that I've talked to. And I service 27 townships, three cities, and five villages, and that is exactly what I was told. So, they said, Sheriff, find a way to make it happen if you need it without putting us through an increase in taxes. So, again, that was the rationale. Could it be moved to the other section? And yes, it could be. What the cost would be, I apologize for not having that answer, but I do know it's a substantial cost for every square foot of tunnel that we have because of the underground nature of it. So, and again, we didn't, we didn't take it lightly that we were going to have to ask you to close a street down, nor take it for granted. We know that that is a busy street. We also believe that that street, you know, it's going to assist those who are coming to do business at the county, because you can still come in Harrison Street from court and get into a new parking lot that used to set up my jail, and you can actually park closer. So, that's a benefit. But yes, it does block off that through traffic.
So, Sheriff, right now, there's no vehicle traffic going south on Adams Street from South Harrison.
Correct.
But that would then open that up to come into that new parking lot. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Because we do have a half of a block right there before it turns into grass. So, or a curb and then grass. But yes, that's going to become parking lot. It'll actually be more parking space than what we had across the street, because we'll be occupying portions of Harrison Street, thereby leaving a large parking lot or larger space. Again, we must leave enough room for jurors and for employees and for people to come to the sheriff's office, as well as people coming to the courthouse. And just constant, constantly looking at the different properties that we have, that was the location that was settled upon.
Sheriff, the front of the, the current offices now for the sheriff's department, with 911 being up above that.
Yes.
That stays? That does not come down?
That's a decision the county controller is going to have to make. There's been discussion about tearing it down and 911 finding a different space. There's been discussions about moving circuit court probation from Bagley Street to where my headquarters currently exists, because the county must provide that space. So, there are options that my commission and my controller has, and they're exploring all of those options, but a decision at this time hasn't been made.
Okay.
Just my neighbor's.
Yeah.
The diagram we have now looks like it's a vacant space, but I'm assuming that you currently look like it's made into a parking lot, but it may or may not be, is what you're saying.
For the headquarters building?
Yes.
Yes, that does appear that it could be, but I can't read that fine print.
We can't either.
It either says the Sheriff's, Sheriff's New Park to rival the waterfront park that Councilwoman Moore spoke about. But I don't think it says that. I, I believe that at this time, they're looking at keeping the building and utilizing it for other purposes. But again, that'll be a decision that's made by those other individuals in the legislative branch.
The reason I raise it is it looks like a little bit, a bigger footprint on the right than it does on the left.
Here, to here, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right, it does, doesn't it? I have to talk to those architects about those drawings, because it does look a little disproportionate, but.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. We.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I appreciate it. I look forward to returning and providing you additional information next month. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Thank you.
So, next, we have Tom Miller presenting on brownfields. We have three brownfield projects on the agenda tonight. So, Tom thought it'd be a good idea to give everyone and kind of an overview of what brownfields are and what, why we have them, and also brief update on these particular projects.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor of Tennessee Council. Mr. Morales. As Tim said, I'm here today to update you on a couple of brownfield projects. Just real quickly, and as the mentioner, as the manager also mentioned, there will be an opportunity for all of city council members that have time to attend a training. We administer the Saginaw County Brownfield Authority as well at Saginaw Future, and we're working with the DEQ to put on a training, which will be good. But just briefly here, so you kind of understand what we're working with. What is a brownfield? Well, most importantly, and the reason why the law was enacted is because it was contaminated with some sort of hazardous material. But it also can be, a number of times, we deal with this in the city of Saginaw, it can be blighted, obsolete, historic, or adjacent to any of these. That's a big distinction and important for the city, because a couple of the projects or properties that we talk about may or may not contain hazardous materials. What it is not, and this is also important for the city of Saginaw, it's not a greenfield. That's the common terminology, the antithesis of a brownfield. And the reason why the legislation was enacted and the reason why it's important for city council members to support brownfields projects is because when a developer is looking to do a project, all of these brownfield expenses and costs are above and beyond what it would cost in a greenfield site. And that's why sometimes these projects lose out to surrounding townships, because the developer might have to incur additional costs where they wouldn't have to in other locations. The primary tool, and there's a few others, but the primary tool for brownfield projects is tax increment financing. It's, it sounds kind of complicated, but it's fairly easy to understand. Essentially, the developer's allowed to capture the incremental revenue above and beyond what the existing value of the property is to help pay for eligible activities. Where does the TIF revenue come from? Well, it comes from the property. So, part of the process that we go through when we're working on a project is to bring a brownfield plan here. Part of that is to spell out the eligible property or the property set to be included in the plan. It does not include debt, so Lori Brown is here, can speak much more intelligently about, about the, the actual taxes that are captured, but it does not include debt. Another important distinction is that the schools are held harmless. So, they're reimbursed for any capture, whether it's at the state or local level. I like this slide probably the best. I'm a PowerPoint geek. Nope, the next one is the best slide. But this one sort of shows you visually the relationship of the investment, the new tax revenue, and then the portion that's captured as part of the project. And if you'll, you'll notice, none of these examples are in, are in the city or in Saginaw County. I borrowed this from the DEQ, but they had a good one. So, if it isn't broke, don't reinvent the wheel. This is probably, I think, the most important slide. And this shows you exactly, so the developer, if he, if he does a project, he or she does a project, they take all of the risk and they, they invest the money on that, that brown bar that you see to the left. This line here, the green line, represents the value of the property. And so, after the building's built, obviously, the, the property values go up. And then, this is what the city and the state forego in terms of tax revenue during the period of the capture. So, the developer is reimbursed, so they pay their taxes, and then they're reimbursed for their eligible activities. And after those, after those costs are reimbursed, then the city and the state and all the taxing jurisdictions get the remaining or the entirety of the tax, the taxes, the new taxes. So, specifically about the, the projects that we're working on, we've been working on a number of them. This is the old Baker Perkins site. You may be familiar with this site, it's at 1010 Hess. This site goes back more than 100 years. They used to make baking ovens on this site. This is a picture that I took after a fella purchased it out of state and said that he was going to put a nursery in there. And he did not put a nursery in there. What he did was he stole all of the steel, or he harvested the steel, and left all of the asbestos-containing bricks in large piles all over the site. The, he didn't pay us taxes, and so the land bank ended up with the property. Another one of these properties that, of course, the land bank does not want to own, but they're the ones that are sort of the, the holder of last resort. The, incidentally, the EPA did pursue both criminal charges and civil charges against the entity. And they're not, they're not resolved yet, but they have pursued both criminal and civil charges against the entity that did this. We worked with the city of Saginaw, John Stumpel, the police department, on a number of issues on this site. Importantly, we got a million dollars from the EPA to help clean up those piles. So, all the piles are gone, and it looks a lot nicer, but it still needs a lot of work. So, last month, at the Saginaw County Brownfield Authority, the land bank, we helped prepare a request to the Saginaw County Brownfield Authority for up to a $900,000 loan to demolish. So, you can, you can easily see here, this is the current, and I know it's hard to see, the laser doesn't show up. I'll try and make it visible here. This is B&amp;P Process and Equipment, actually, B&amp;P Littleford Day now. And this is all owned by the land bank. These are the existing structures that are connected to, to B&amp;P. We've had a number of issues, as the police chief can attest, and John Stumpel, they share a basement, they share a common wall. When it rains or when there's, when there's a heavy rain, water collects in the basement, and it actually filters into their records room, where they have sandbags set up to direct the water into a drain, because it ruined a bunch of their records that go back 80 or 90 years for some prints they had. We have also had scrap metal thieves break into the building, so they have totally gutted all of these buildings of their copper, and have broken into this building to try and get at the copper. And this is an existing business, and I can't recall how many employees they have. They make mixing equipment for the aerospace industry and for the pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical industry. Very good company. They've been very patient with us. This is, this has been a challenge for them to bring their customers in, as well as security. So, the land bank went out on a limb, requested a $900,000 loan. They're going to demolish these buildings, turn the property, part of the property over to, to B&amp;P, so that they can set up a perimeter and secure their, their facility and make it look nicer for their, when their customers come in. The reason why, why this is coming before you today is because we need a resolution of concurrence. So, I know it's going to get a little complicated again, but the county has a brownfield authority and the city has a brownfield authority. The reason why we took this through the county's brownfield authority, not through the city's, is because the county has a million-dollar revolving loan fund, a little bit more than a million dollars, you'll see in a second, to loan to projects. And so, now, Tim Yalanda and I, through our work with Menards, have begun to set up a process to, to form our own little pot of money so that we can begin to lend. But this is a good example of how the county and the city work together. We've got a problem in the city, the land bank is stepping up and demolishing the buildings. They're also going to loan the land bank the money to do it, and we simply need a resolution of concurrence from the council. The next project, this is obviously the, the building at the foot of the Genesee Street Bridge that is no longer there. This is another project that the city and I have worked on. John Stumpel and I actually were the last two, I think, people alive that were, were in this building. I'm assuming we were. We were in there about a week before it began to collapse. You'll remember that the owner tried and tried and tried to save this building, couldn't get an engineer to certify the structural steel, flew them in from, from five different states, I think. It was simply not possible. And you could see the result, because one of the beams actually snapped just from rust and kicked out a corner of the building, and it began to collapse. The city shut the street down, and, and so, we sort of organized quickly an emergency brownfield meeting and during the demolition. Again, the developer's seeking a brownfield plan, which will need a resolution of concurrence from the council. And they also approved a three, up to $300,000 loan to help the developer tear the building down. None of these projects. to help the developer tear the building down. None of these projects have the tax increment financing that I spoke about yet. We anticipate that probably each one of these projects at some time will be amended and we will bring back a tax increment finance plan. This one, for instance, the developer would like to do something with this property to develop it one way or another. We have issues because this is in the 100-year floodplain. It's actually in the floodway, which I'm not an engineer. Phil Carwatt could probably speak more intelligently than I could about that. But it makes it very challenging to try and redevelop this property. They have plans to do so, but we wanted to get this in a brownfield plan. We wanted it to come down safely so the Genesee Street Bridge could be open. Again, we need a letter of concurrence from the city council to support that project. These will all, assuming that the city council, that you all approve these, the resolutions, will then take it through the, to the county process for final approval from the county board of commissioners. And the last, this is one that Yalanda and I and John Stumpel, again, have been working on for a number of years. The SEDC foreclosed. We've been working with a couple of interested developers looking at redeveloping the Berenger Building. It's probably a 10 or 12 million dollar project, just based on the square footage and the history, the historic nature of the, of the building and its current state. One of the big hangups that everyone that we've talked to about redeveloping the project is the environmental condition and not knowing the environmental condition of the property. So John Stumpel, again, and I are working on another project downtown, and we found asbestos. We didn't, but AKT Peerlist did. It added about 50% of the total project budget cost, you know. So that can be a very scary thing for developers. We took a request to the county again, and they were nice enough to grant us $15,000 doing asbestos survey so that we can provide that to interested parties so that they have a known quantity when they seek to do developments. So all of these three are different projects and they're important projects. One is obviously blight removal, another was a safety issue, and hopefully this one will be a preservation and an investment story for downtown. But they all need to be concurred with by city council. And so those are the three projects I have.
So, if we concur with these agreements, there's no cost to the city?
That's right. And that's a good point. The, right now, the, as the law states, in order to qualify for a loan or a grant, they need to be in a brownfield plan. So we wanted to get the brownfield plans approved. And part of that process is city council, the local, local governing jurisdiction needs to concur with the county. They don't want the county to approve something and sort of step over city council. They want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So we would do that. Now, if, if we did bring a project back and amend the brownfield plan, you would have your chance to review it and have questions. That's where we'd bring perhaps a tax increment revenue plan where you might forego some taxes to help pay for some of these eligible activities. But we would work with the developers and city staff, prepare those plans, and then bring them back for you, for your review and approval.
Different questions on this. Some would apply to project one and three.
Okay.
But, starting with project one, the property, all the property involved is owned by the land bank?
Yes.
Okay, so, B&amp;P Littleton's ends basically at the wall of the taller, newer building.
That's right.
And everything south and east of there is land bank property?
It used to be part of, the whole complex was Baker Perkins, but there was a legal separation and a sale of the property, and their attorneys have, you know, it's a total separation in terms of their environmental liability and such.
So being owned by the land bank, its current taxable value is zero?
That's right.
Okay. And until placed with someone outside the land bank, it stays at zero?
That's right.
So, there's no likelihood of any tax increment financing until you've sold it or conveyed it to someone else?
Right.
What possibilities are there for loan repayment then? Correct me if I'm wrong, but these two projects together use up almost all of the revolving loan fund for the county brownfield.
Yep. They'll use up, they'll use up nearly all of it. You make two good points. One is that we want to get this property back onto the tax rolls. That's always the land bank's goal, is to get it from non-taxable to taxable. The B&amp;P, they want to form a perimeter. So they're still considering how much of that property that they need to be able to create a perimeter. They'll own a portion of that. That will be taxable and that could generate some revenues. The land bank is paying this out of their general fund, so they're just sort of eating the cost. They wanted to defray the cost, the million dollars, a little less than a million dollars, over 10 years.
Okay, I'm confused. Is, is the project going to occur?
Yes. I mean, they're going to, so the project, as it is in the plan today, is the demolition of the property. The land bank, minus any tax increment revenue financing, is going to pay the loan back regardless. They're going to pay that out of their general operations budget. They didn't want to, and they probably couldn't have, a million dollar liability on their books for one year. So we were talking with the DEQ about, okay, how can we sort of help smooth the cost over 10 years? And the revolving loan fund, by them doing it, they're going to do a 10-year loan. By doing that, then they could pay $90,000 a year to demolish the property.
So, God forbid, no development comes along. The loan would be repaid. They, they have scheduled a way to repay this loan.
Yes, and, and the land bank will sign a loan agreement to that effect.
Okay. Got it. And project number three, the emergency demo on the building on the riverfront, similarly, if there is no redevelopment occurring, what is the current ownership's ability to repay any loan?
Yeah, we will have, so that'll be negotiated with the, the county attorney, who represents the Saginaw County Brownfield Authority Board. But he already has provided a letter of credit from the bank, which proves his ability to pay. So they'll have, I believe, at the county Brownfield Authority Board meeting, they're going to require a personal guarantee from him, the primary shareholder of the, in the LLC, and any spouse or relations that have the ability to pay a corporate guarantee. All of those things will be included in the loan document. So it's, it's sort of like a typical loan closing. There'll be closing documents, UCC statements, if those are appropriate, personal guarantees, all those will be taken care of.
Absent of specifics, would you expect it to be something similar, a 10-year amortization?
I think this one was a 15-year amortization, if I'm not mistaken.
All right. And the county brownfield is comfortable with tying up a significant portion of their revolving funds?
Yeah, so Saginaw Future, we took over administration, I think, a year ago of the county's brownfield authority. And one of the things that we wanted to do was to activate it. It had been sort of not very active for a number of years. If you'll remember, Buena Vista borrowed some money from the county revolving loan fund, the brownfield revolving loan fund, to tear down the former Fort Saginaw Mall, which was their number one priority. It was blighted, it was not useful. And so we wanted to go out there and try and beat the bushes, so to speak, and find these projects to get the money revolving. That's the point. There's a little bit of interest, so the money that comes back, and then all of the brownfield plans have a component in there to reseed the fund, not only with the proceeds from the loan, but also tax increment revenue to go back into fund the loan program.
I think that answers my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. So finally, we have Chief Van Leeu. Just going to give you a brief presentation on the fire apparatus, which purchase and loan package is in tonight's agenda for approval.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Council, Manager Morales. Tonight, just like to give you a little information about the apparatus purchase that is on the agenda before you tonight. I'll kind of show you what we currently are operating with and what we're looking to, to go into, looking to purchase, and some of the reasons why, why we're asking for approval for this purchase. Currently, Engine One, that's stationed down at our headquarters building, 801 Federal. That's Engine One, Station One. That's a 1997 Spartan quality apparatus. It's 1,500 gallon pump, 500 gallon water tank. It's got 63,000 miles on the odometer and 11,500 pump hours or engine hours. So, it's been a very good engine, but it is definitely showing its age at this point. To give you a little understanding on the industry standards for fire apparatus, NFPA 1901, it's the standard for fire apparatus. They recommend that after 15 years of service, that apparatus remove from frontline service. At that point, they can be put into a reserve status. As I said, Engine One, you know, it's, it's been a very good apparatus. It's been very well maintained, but it is five years over standard at this point. It's 20 years old. Its age and usage, it gets pretty significant usage. Breakdowns have been more frequent. I included a photo on here. I'm sorry about that. Included a photo on here of one of our, one of our unfortunate incidents, but it just is representative of some of the issues we've dealt with. Apparatus repairs are not cheap. Fire apparatus are specialty pieces of equipment, so they are not, not cheap typically to fix. This will show you what the costs over the last 10 years have been for maintenance. And, you know, averages out to about $11,600 a year. We've had about $7,800 into it this current year. What I will say is, last year, we did have over $20,000 into this apparatus. So, again, costs are rising and reliability is down. So, this is the new apparatus that we're looking at. And just to let you know, this is a stock unit. It's a demo. It is being offered to us. It has been through many different trade shows. It's been on display. And, no buyers as of yet. Hopefully, we'd like to, we'd like to fix that. What I'll say is that this apparatus is pretty well stripped down. It does not have a lot of bells and whistles on it. It's very, very functional, and it'll meet all the needs that we're looking for. But there are a lot of departments out in the world there that look for a lot of flashy items on their apparatus, and we just don't need that. So this is a 450 horsepower Cummins diesel engine, 1,500 gallon pump. The difference on this one, it's a 1,000 gallon water tank versus the current 500. It gives us added capabilities. It has a pre-pipe foam proportioning system on it. Nice part about this is that this is pumped, the foam is pumped to all outlets on the apparatus. Our current Engine One has a foam system on it, but it only pumps to one line. So it's, it's been kind of a difficult apparatus to work with. We, we've had a lot of issues with the foam system itself, so it's very unreliable. This current system, or the system that we're looking at on this new apparatus, is very similar to the Engine Two purchase that we, we made a few years back. And that's worked out very well. It's a foam capability, so it's a good improvement for us. 6,000 kilowatt generator, and it's got five passenger seating. Also note that Engine Four currently, right now, does not have an onboard generator. It is what is called a, oh boy, here we go. It doesn't have a generator. It takes a current that's generated by the engine. It doesn't meet the electrical needs that we're putting onto it, I guess is the best way to put it. We tried a few fixes on it. We're just not able to get the output on electrical for it, for the different pieces of equipment that we're adding to these apparatus. So this will certainly bring us up to, up to today's standards. The manufacturer is Spartan. They're based out of Charlotte. They are a, you know, a Michigan company. They, they've got a pretty good foothold in the apparatus manufacturers' market in the country. And they're, they do put together a nice piece of equipment. The nice part about it is that the parts and, and service are all readily available, and it's a Michigan company. Cabin chassis is built in Michigan. And the final completion of the apparatus was in North Dakota, but then it comes back to Michigan, and hopefully that's where it will stay. We currently have five Spartan apparatus within our fleet. The oldest are of 1990 models. So, but they've been very good apparatus. We've had very good luck with them. Part of the benefits of an apparatus purchase is reducing costs. And what we see here is a reduction of maintenance costs due to warranties. It's got a two-year bumper to bumper warranty on it. Has five years on the engine, transmission and pump. Aluminum body, cabin paint, 10 years. Stainless steel, 10. Electrical, four. Chassis and water tank, our lifetime. So with the warranties involved, we're anticipating less than $2,000 a year on any type of maintenance. That includes any certification testing that we have to do annually. The current Engine One that we have in service will be moved to a reserve status. We currently carry two engines in reserve status. We have four frontline to reserve. What that will do, there's a trickle-down effect, so that will push one of the units that we currently have in reserve out of service. That is a 1990 Spartan. And they're very, there, there's not a great deal of value left in those apparatus at that age, at 27 years old. But we'll do the best we can trying to sell for the best price we can and try to recoup something out of it. One of the pieces of the puzzle here that I think is important is that that apparatus that we're going to move out of the inventory currently has a pump on it that didn't pass certification. So the only way to get it up towards certifiable is through an overhaul of the pump system. An estimate on that is about $15,000. So this purchase allows us to avoid that cost, and we can still sell that apparatus, apparatus out on the market as is, you know, and hopefully we'll get some buyers on it. You know, some of the features of a new apparatus, really, it's more like a, a new, a new vehicle, a new passenger automotive. If you think about the, the safety of things that are built into them now, it's got full airbag product, protection for rollover. It's got side curtains, knee curtains, you name it. It pretty well encapsulates the crew inside, which is very, very good. It's got a crew restraint indicator system in there. You can't move the rig without being restrained, which is, is good. You know, we have policies in place, but this just confirms that they will not move apparatus without a seatbelt. So. And it's got anti-lock braking system. There are other systems on it, but I guess the best comparison would be to take a 20-year old vehicle and look at the safety features involved. You know, and by today's standards, this is like a modern vehicle, a new, a new auto. So the purchase price was three, would be 394, 466. What we're able to do in this current, in the fiscal year '17 operating budget is identify funds to be able to put a down payment down on this current, on the apparatus we're looking at. So the total finance amount would be 344,000, 466. Amortized over 10 years, payments annually approximately 40,000, 40,500. The way we were able to come up with this thing, it's very similar to what we've been accomplishing. I think we've taken great strides moving forward on our, on reducing our maintenance costs. But we were able to, you know, we, we carry vendors. We have blankets you've approved previously. And we're very, very close oversight on the repairs we have made on our apparatus. We use the three different vendors. They all have specialties, and they are all, we have to use specialty vendors because of the certifications for the fire pump and the fire, the pieces of the fire apparatus. So we do seek the best price on any time of major repairs. Obviously, we follow all purchasing ordinances. And we've just been very aggressive on seeking best pricing and taking on some smaller jobs in-house. Our crews on duty are doing a fantastic job of day-to-day maintenance, taking care of the small things, things that, you know, years past may have gone out to the shop at a, at a significant expense. If we're able to accomplish it safely in-house and make a good fix, then we try to do that. And we have helped to reduce costs significantly by doing that. And, and just very close oversight on our vendors. You know, I think, I think vendors understand that we're watching everything, and they do a very good job for us. And I think the oversight's been very good for us. The end result of this purchase is not- Um, eh, the end result of this purchase is not increase our budget. This is a cost-neutral purchase, uh, so our operating budget would not increase, uh, if this purchase was approved. And there's a picture of it. Um, that picture actually was taken down at, uh, FDIC, which is the largest, um, vendor displays in the country down in Indianapolis, so, uh, it made its way down there and, uh, like to bring it back to Saginaw. Yes?
This will be number three, right, going into retirement, well, not retirement, 'cause you rotate them around.
Yeah, we shuffle them down. As a new apparatus comes into the fleet, then we take the next, uh, apparatus, the oldest apparatus we can, we move it down into reserve status.
Okay.
So, for example, Engine One, which is our oldest frontline apparatus right now at twenty years old, that will go down to the reserve status. The twenty-seven-year-old apparatus in reserve will be moved out of the inventory.
Okay. So, we're twenty-seven years old, they can't use none of them parts for nothing, okay? I answered my own question. I answered my own question, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, I think it's easy to be pointed out that by, you know, getting this stripped-down demo version, you're saving, what, a hundred thousand dollars on a bells and whistles one?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, you're looking at a minimum of probably sixty thousand dollar savings. Uh, you can look at some of our neighbors that have bought apparatus recently, uh, you know, they're starting at hun, four hundred and fifty thousand plus, so.
Well, and I think that needs to be, uh, really appreciated, what you're doing for making these, uh, recognize, you know, the city doesn't have the funds to buy them, just outright come and purchase one. So, being able to do what you're doing here to update an out-of-date equipment, piece of equipment with something new that we can then use effectively makes a lot of sense to me. Um, so I just want to commend you for that, that's, and the staff that are doing a wonderful job with the repairs and the maintenance that they're doing in, in-house, so.
Thank you.
On the other engines we have then, we have two, two thousand two pieces of apparatus?
We have actually three.
Three.
Um, those are, those are Pierce apparatus. We have two engines and one, uh, aerial ladder, it's truck one.
Oh, two inches and the aerial.
Yeah, those are two thousand two Pierces.
So, actually, they're just moving into the, just a little too old category also.
Yeah, uh, you know, and actually, uh, they came before council here a few months back to do a repair on Engine Three, which is one of those Pierces. Um, had to get new frame rails on it due to corrosion issue. Um, we've identified a similar issue on those other two, two thousand twos, but we're taking steps to kind of bide some time on those instead of replacing the frames. Um, the good news is I, I got word from the, uh, manager, from the repair shop that that Engine Four should be back this week.
And the two thousand thirteen engine we have, that's a Spartan also.
That's a Spartan. It, it's almost the exact engine here, um, except this one has a one-foot longer wheel base and a little larger engine.
I'm glad you mentioned wheel base. Uh, physically, this fits where we want it to fit?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to, to be clear on the financing we do on, we're going to be doing on this, we have a resolution coming up. This is a general obligation of the city. We're committing to this full purchase price and amortizing it over the ten years. And internally, we fund it through your department, but it's like selling a small bond to pay for this purchase.
Fire truck purchase, and I think the two thousand twos were this kind of a loan too, so it's, it's not, not the same as a bond where you don't have the issuance, it's just an installment loan, just like, um, just like a loan, just like a car loan for anyone else, the interest rates set by the bank, you sign papers with the bank, we're not... When you do a bond, there's a lot more that's involved in it.
By the way, it's a very attractive interest rate.
That's all.
What do you smaller, how long do they keep their fire trucks, you know, like smaller things?
Birds run, Frank can move. I mean, do they, they get new, couldn't like this, they end up buying our stuff?
Well, um, you know, that's interesting. A lot of it has to do on usage, so if you get out into more rural departments that don't have the usage, they're able to extend a life on them. For a, uh, an urban department, you know, and a department as active as ours, um, we've really stretched out our fleet quite a bit. Um, you know, our average age of our fleet, I believe, is thirteen and a half years old right now. This is going to help bring that down. Um, but, you know, a lot of it's usage and maintenance and, and that's one thing I will say is we've, we've taken very good care of these apparatus, so.
I'm just saying, we, we've turned it on a lot of houses, less fires, city shrinking, you know, I was the one that maybe we can get by another ten years with this one, but, uh...
Can I get ten years out of this one? No, I probably can't.
They gonna beat you up too bad, but I'm watching the money too.
I appreciate what you're saying, but I do also, I mean, part of this is, is the safety of our crews. I really have to take that into account and safety of the citizens, you know, we're responding to incidents, we're, we're rolling a large piece of equipment down the road, um, and we want to do it as safely as possible and be as efficient as we can with our job, so. Um, can I get ten more years out of it? Probably not, uh, but we are doing everything we can to stretch them out.
That proved it's mighty, you can take a good guy, take care of them, that's what that proved.
Our folks take pride in what they have and, and what they're doing. They, they do the best they can and it's phenomenal.
Okay, all right. Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and that concludes the management update.
Mayor, your next item is the consent agenda.
And it's been available at City Hall and on the city's website and on SGTV channel one ninety-one. Need a motion to approve consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is, is reports from boards, commissions and committees.
Are there any, uh, council members, any reports from any of the boards or commissions that you're on? I will mention just, uh, I will ask in the next, uh, month or so that maybe we will get a update from STARS, um, and the many positive things that are going on. I can even share with you, we do not have enough time to share with this. Um, I, I will briefly say, for an organization that was within three weeks of shutting its doors, uh, to what they are doing now is just amazing, uh, just amazing. And, um, uh, so I, I'd like to, maybe in a month or so, we'll share with that, uh, some of the new stuff and, and some of the stuff on the horizon, uh, that we cannot share openly right now because there's negotiations and stuff, but it's amazing, uh, so I just wanted to pass that on, so. If there isn't any other, Madam Clerk?
We are at consideration and passing of ordinances. Our first one is to amend chapter one-ten of title eleven business regulations by amending section one-ten point oh six titled suspension, revocation, denial of renewal of license.
Motion to adopt. And moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to make...
Which one is, okay?
Going backwards forward from this one, it's going forward, okay? You saying, yeah?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
The question is retroactive.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our second one tonight is to amend chapter ninety-six of title nine, general regulations, by amending section ninety-six point thirty-two titled curb restoration.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
And our final one tonight is to amend chapter fourteen, titled finance and purchasing of title one administrative code.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a question. There was a, my question or concern is, is that when we make, when we do our bidding part, process, are we, are we asking for safety, safety issues? Are we asking for records? Not just going with the lowest bidder because he's the lowest bidder? He may be the lowest bidder, but you might have a bad safety record, so my question is, is that part of our bidding process?
Yes, this would typically fall in Phil Carwatt's area in the engineering division because most of those contracts are, would be related to streets or lighting and things like that, so as, um, they utilize the lowest and best bidder, which is in, in the ordinance. So, in their process, um, engineering department reviews the safety requirements for the job. They require twenty-four hour safety line, as Phil mentioned, um, they require, uh, safety procedures for workers and they look at those type of violations. So, that's part of their review process, uh, specifically in the engineering department. When we, when we do other purchases, um, in other departments, I don't think that would be as much of a concern as it is with the public services, uh, projects. Yes?
For the lowest bidder, we actually look at safety records.
In engineering, um, they look at a number of things beyond what's in the purchasing ordinance, including safety, but they typically get a proposal and they review it separate from the, the dollar amount bid and Phil, um, Phil can come up and kind of explain that to you as well.
The city management, and it depends on the size of the project too, but we, we request a list of references. You know, we do some, I wouldn't call them background checks, but we'll check with other municipalities that may have done work with some of these companies to see if there were any issues, not only related to quality of the work, but also any, you know, if there's somebody coming in and they've had a, you know, a, a negative, I guess, you know, some comments from some municipalities they may have done work with, we'll bring that to you and even though they may be the low, we may say, hey, we're not going to recommend this low because we're aware of these other issues that were on some projects. Um, and then, you know, we do projects anywhere from, you know, two thousand on up to, you know, ten, fifteen. Right now, we're working on a twenty million dollar project, so this wasn't just a bid, it was more of a, you know, a type of a request for proposal type where you have to submit proposals and show us where you've done quality work of this size so that we trust you can come in here and do that work for the city and we won't have them kind of issues. And then, you know, in the pre-construction or pre-bid meetings, sometimes we ask for your safety plan, what are your, what's your safety protocol, you know, I mean, different documents like that that we can go through and ensure that, that they're up on that, they're up on the safety requirements and that, that may be required. And then, depending on the funding, I mean, certain, for sure with federal and state dollars, you have a, an additional amount of documents you have to review and research with the contractors, but, um, we haven't had any issues that I'm aware of as it relates to safety in the seventeen years that I've been here, so.
The question, and I was, and I said I would bring it too, because right now, we do have groups coming in that are speaking about safety and, you know, we, we do need to be careful, so you've answered my question.
And we do training, we make sure our inspectors that are on the site understand whether it's trench widths or different type of safety standards that they enforce onto them contractors, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, any other comments? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, our next order of business is resolutions. Our first one is concurring with the provisions of a Brownfield plan for one-oh-seven, one-eleven and one-twenty-one South Water Street.
Need a motion to adopt?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any further questions on, any further questions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Next resolution is concurring with the provisions of a Brownfield plan for one-twenty-six North Franklin Street.
Need a motion to adopt?
Support.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our third resolution, concurring with the provisions of a Brownfield plan for one-ten, ten-ten Hess Avenue and six-twenty-two Ortmann Street.
Need a motion to adopt?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our final resolution is authorizing the installment purchase contract for the purchase of a fire apparatus truck.
Motion to adopt?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion.
Mayor, you are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
Any motions or miscellaneous business to come between? Well, we got them lined up tonight. Go ahead, uh, go ahead, Councilman Clark.
I'd like to make a quick report. Uh, the mayor asked me to attend on his behalf, the Mayor, Michigan Mayor's Association Conference about a week and ten days ago, and I was able to do that in Monroe and it was quite informative. Um, the, there were presentations by the, my plant in Moran, which is a company we've done business with, the CPA firm, covering budget process for cities, statutory requirements, accounting principles and procedures and multi-year budgeting. We had a Michigan Municipal League provide a legislative update on pending legislation and the National League of Cities on topics and issues of priority to cities, including Michigan and nationally, and planning for the future, both locally and with regard to federal legislations. The one thing I want to bring up is for my fellow councilpersons, there was one particular ordinance or, uh, set of bills imposed in the legislature, House Bill four-five-oh-three and Senate Bill three-twenty-nine, the two of them would require all short-term rentals to be treated as a permitted residential use in any residential zone regardless of local zoning regulations. I don't think that's a good idea for us as a city to, to allow that to happen, if we can avoid it, and I would encourage our councilpersons to also talk to your legislators and even the citizens, to have, uh, any short-term rental be treated as a permitted residential use could be a real destructive thing to our neighborhood, so, just to bring that up. Um, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity.
Could we, uh, check with our local, uh, state representatives and see where they're at on that bill?
Yes, I, I would encourage that.
Because we, our state representative, Senator Horn, and representative, uh, to see where they're at on that and share our thoughts with them. That'd be well to do.
Okay, uh, Councilman Mellon?
Well, to expand on, uh, Mayor Protem Clark's comments here, I wanted to ask the manager, have we taken a position on these bills and if not, would you like the council to provide you a resolution, uh, with a statement of position?
Well, I guess that's up to you. You know, if you want to, there, there are a lot of, uh, issues that if a number of council members contact me and would like, uh, me to express a certain view with, um, with our legislators, then we'll do that, um, but other ones, I think, um, Councilman Tibbs has had a few resolutions specific to, um, certain bills or policies that, that councils wish to, uh, make it public that they're opposed to, um, so.
Brought this to the attention of the Mayor's Association meeting and does oppose it, so your, your league does oppose it and certainly, uh, it, I think it might be good to at least find out what our local legislators' position is on it. They're the first ones we want to address, I think. Um, i-if, if by the next council meeting, we're not happy with that position, then I think an official, um, motion by this council would be appropriate, yeah.
Do we know what the status in the legislative process is on these right now? Are they in committee? Are they... Well, this is, this is one to get a hold of our people, then.
It hasn't moved much at all since it's been sending messages.
We'll check with our own, our own local.
I have already started to process, um, at the meeting, at the mayor meeting, you know, it pays to know people that know, okay? Um, we also, we got a handout today on, they are getting ready to start an information note and it's going to be free and displeasing. and it's going to be free and displeasing for us to attend to get updated information. The Uber, the rental, all of that, they are opposing right now. Everything is at a standstill. It's moving, but not fast. But MML has said, if they need to come and speak to us, they have no problem with coming to Saginaw to speak with us.
Convention coming up, yes.
And I get an update every week.
Yep, and you share those with us. All right, anything else before council, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed?